Okay, Mr. Chairman, you are free to begin the meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. King. So I'm calling the September 24th, 2020, a virtual work session meeting to order. To start off, we do have our new planning board member who has joined us today for her first meeting, and I'm gonna let her introduce herself, and that's Mo McCray. So Bo, if you would just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself, and you know, also, what about planning excites you? And after that, I would like for each planning board member to introduce themselves as well, even though she's probably heard a little bit about us, you know, maybe your name, what you do for industry, also, maybe how long you've been on the planning board. And I'm gonna go in the order of what I'm looking at on my screen, so it will be Brenda, Clarence, Melinda, Jack, Tommy, George, and Jason. All right, so, Mo is on you. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mo McCray. I came to Winston about a year and a half ago, close approaching two years. I come from a planning background. I went to Georgetown for urban and regional planning. That's where I got my master's degree. And currently, I work in the affordable housing industry, developing white tech across the country for profit developers. So I am actively looking for sites, mostly in South Carolina and Georgia, but always excited to dabble in other states. I've been working in Wisconsin, so I'm happy to come a little to warmer climates. So, and maybe, I have a three-year-old and a husband, so I have two children at home. And what's exciting about planning to me, I got into planning while I was an undergraduate in Baltimore City, and was, I got an internship at the zoning department, and cried bloody murder that this was the worst assignment, that I was never going to like it. And it transformed my life. And mostly, I was working on food deserts and the new zoning code in Baltimore City, which is still not official. So it's been quite some time to do that. And that's what's exciting to planning about me, is that you get to touch the built environment. You get to touch every aspect of it, and I think zoning codes are really good beach read. So those things about me.
Thank you, Mo. Brenda, do you just tell, welcome her and tell a little bit about yourself as well? You're all mute.
Okay. Now, that sounded so good, and you missed it. Let me start over. Just to welcome you as another working mom on planning board, it can be done. A living testament to that. So I have a background in environmental regulatory compliance, land development, a lot, just a lot of related areas in this. I've been on the board over 16 years now. I was on the PTA with my daughter. I gave up PTA to join planning board many moons ago. So I think you'll enjoy it, and I welcome you.
Thank you.
I think I'm next. I believe Chris, you said?
Yes.
Mo, welcome on board. We're delighted to have you. I'm Clarence Lamb, and I work in the commercial real estate arena, and I touch the built environment every day. I clean windows and pick up trash and do all the kinds of things that the built environment requires us to do to be usable by our businesses in town. But I live in Kernersville. I've lived here for 55 years, and I'm not quite sure exactly how long I've been on planning board, but it's been a pretty long period of time, and I've really enjoyed my experience on the planning board. A lot of collegiality, a lot of bright, deliberate-thinking minds on the planning board. I think you'll really enjoy that. And in any event, I'd be happy to help you any way that I can if you have any questions about what an old guy knows about the planning board. So welcome on board.
Thank you. Melinda?
Hi, Mo. Nice to meet you. I'm Melinda, and I'm here on my second term on the planning board. My background is really in linguistics. Syntax was my field when I was in it. But I came to the planning board because of my interest in neighborhood issues. I was, have been very active with the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance. And I'm very interested in quality-of-life issues and how they intersect with planning and zoning.
Thank you, Melinda. Jack?
Oh, boy. I'm almost embarrassed in the midst of all of these bright people. But I want to start by saying I already welcome and admire your enthusiasm and energy, Mo. Perhaps I won't stand out quite so much anymore. I also have an educational background in planning. I came to Winston-Salem in 1990 to become the city's downtown development director. I retired from there 15 years ago and have been in the practice of commercial real estate brokerage since that time. And I am very proud to announce that as of last Wednesday, I am now a full-time work-from-home commercial real estate broker as the head and owner of a newly-established company operating under the name of Winston-Salem Commercial Real Estate. I welcome you, your input and your wisdom. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Here we go. Round three.
Mr. Hicks?
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Tommy Hicks. My background is in banking. I have been a branch banker for about the period of almost 20 years, and most recently have changed tracks to the community development coordinator for Truliant Federal Credit Union, where I work with nonprofits throughout the triad region of North Carolina, from Forsyth County all the way to Randolph County. So I get to work with nonprofits regularly and help them to reach their goals and help them to match up similar missions that Truliant about. And I have served on the planning board now, for this is my second term. And I have loved every minute of it, and I think you'll find in it a wonderful experience of getting involved with the people of Winston-Salem and doing a very good work for its citizens. So welcome. Welcome.
Mr. Bryan?
Welcome, Mo. I'm George Bryan, and I've spent 40 years working with families. And of course, housing's been a big issue. Their communities have been a big issues in trying to help out families. I retired from getting paid, but I still do about the same work as I've always done, chairing boards and working on different activities with the state of North Carolina nationally, around families and trying to help families out. I'm also a big neighborhood person, and I live in the West End and helped with this neighborhood board and the planning of the neighborhood over the years. And have been part of a group, the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance, which for over 22 years or longer, has reviewed every single agenda of the planning board each month in looking at cases and seeing how it affects the lives of people. And I truly believe that zoning does help families, it does help neighborhoods, it does help development, and we need all of those things working together.
Thank you. Mr. Grubbs?
Welcome aboard, Mo. I'm Jason Grubbs. I'm an attorney, practice mainly in the areas of commercial and residential real estate. Do a little estate planning, pre-bate work, some business law, but mainly focused on commercial and residential real estate. Been on the planning board for, I believe, right at three years now. So I also practice out in Kernersville. I live in Kernersville, grew up here. Little piece of trivia, Clarence Lamb was my very first landlord when I went out on my own early in my time practicing law. I've been practicing about 17 years. And I will attest to his washing windows and taking out the trash and all kinds of other stuff. He was as good a landlord as you could ask for, so. But we're excited to have you and look forward to you being able to share a lot of your educational background and work background. And I'm sure you'll be quite an asset for our board.
Thank you all. Mo, my name is Chris Leek. I am now an investment banker with Morgan Stanley. Been there for 17 years, been in banking pretty much all my career, with the exception, I spent a year with the city as assistant director of housing and neighborhood services. And prior to doing that, I was a minority builder with the city that most of you don't realize. I built two houses over in East Winston under the name of C and D Enterprises. So I've always kind of had an interest in this, and I was the chair of the zoning board of adjustments and was honored to be nominated for the planning board and worked under a great man who I came to admire and respect, who's no longer with us due to his death. But it's a joy. I think, you know, Clarence said there's a lot of mind, critical thinking on this board. This board has really challenged me to think differently about a lot of issues that I would have taken for granted. So I'm sure that you're gonna be amazed with the wealth of knowledge as well. And we're looking forward to you sharing your knowledge with us. So with that, welcome. And Erin, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we've got a few items on your agenda today. And we'll just go ahead and dive right in to item number one, and that's the family group home text amendment. So Samuel Hunter, this is Samuel's first text amendment, and he has been working with Chris Murphy on this one. So I believe Samuel's gonna introduce it, and then Chris is there to help out with this one as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Samuel.
All right. Good afternoon to everyone. Pleasure to have you, Ms. McCray. So I'll give you a little bit of background about this text amendment. Recently, there was a reasonable accommodation filed with the city back in November of 2019. And that was a family group home. And so we're proposing a text amendment to amend the definitions of family group home A, B, and C, specifically supervisory personnel in these definitions. So family group home A, as you can see on this PowerPoint, is a transitional housing facility with support and supervisory personnel licensed by the state of North Carolina or operated by nonprofit corporation chartered pursuant to Chapter 55A North Carolina general statutes, which provides room, board, and personal care and rehabilitation services in a supportive family environment with no more than six residents. And that's a big kicker in this, exclusive to supervisory personnel, including but not limited to handicapped persons, older adults, foster children, abused individuals, homeless persons, and the recovering drug and alcohol abuse. So family group home A is the only group home that's allowed in residential, single-family zoning district also. So next slide, Amy. And the same thing for family group home B. The only differential between these two is that family group home B allows for no more than 12 residents, and that excludes supervisory personnel. And family group home B is allowed in residential multifamily zoning districts and commercial zoning districts also. Next slide, please. And family group home C follows the same guidelines, except there's no more than 20 residents exclusive of supervisory personnel, and it is also allowed in residential multifamily and commercial zoning districts also. Next slide. So we, I've been conducting some research along with Chris with some of our neighboring cities, trying to get some information on how they define supervisory personnel within their family group home definitions. And there's still some things that we're working on to get a better understanding of how we'd like this to be defined in our definitions. But we want to make sure that supervisory personnel is not included in the residential count. We want to make sure that people are not taking advantage of this. And some members of the home and some group homes have been considered senior group members, and that is not something that we want specifically in that definition. We want some type of distinction between the two, so that they're not included in that residential count. So that's kind of the brief of this text amendment and where we're headed with this. So does anyone have any questions?
Just as a point of clarification, when we speak about residents, are we speaking about full-time overnight residents or day programs only?
Yes, sir. These are full-time overnight residents, people that stay in the home.
Good. That's helpful in that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Samuel, this is sort of my specialty, having run these for years and run a variety of them over the period of time, from drug and alcohol to teen to small kids to psychiatric to runaway-type facilities. And of course, we dealt with that when we did an amendment to the UDO of trying to lower the concentration of these in neighborhoods, as some neighborhoods were gaining too much concentration. There are some ins and outs of this. When you talk about supervisory, there are some facilities that use couples as the supervisor. And often, in these type of facilities, there is a state, well, not often, nearly all of them have a state-regulated ratio of personnel to clients. And that's a good way to sort of zoom in on how many are actually needed and how many are being added beyond that. And in fact, I don't know of a group home that doesn't have some kind of certification that requires a certain ratio.
All right. Sounds good. I will keep that in mind. Make note of that. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan, I just want to weigh in just a little bit of a clarification. And I agree on the ones that are state-licensed. The ones that we are having a particular issue with are the ones that are not state-licensed, types of recovery homes that are run by private organizations. And the issue that we're running into is in the family group home A situation, where you have no more than six residents living as a single housekeeping unit exclusive of supervisory personnel, what's happening is, as Samuel alluded to, you may have six folks that are living there that are in the program, and you'll have a couple other folks that are living there that are considered senior house members. But essentially, the only reason that they are considered senior house members, and thus, they're being called supervisory personnel by these groups is because they've been there longer than anyone else. They're not really being paid or anything else. So it has an effect of kind of circumventing the rules. So instead of having six folks living there, you're having eight that are actually in the program. And we've had a couple complaints, and that's what the enforcement action that was taken pushed the property owner to then file a reasonable accommodation request. And we started looking at it, we thought that, you know, we're kind of on thin ice with our definition or lack thereof of supervisory personnel within the definition. So that's why we want to expand that, so that we can make it clear what was meant. I think the intent behind that was in situations where you have developmentally or physically disabled individuals, and you have folks that are there to assist them and help them with their daily activities and those kind of things. It really wasn't meant to kind of almost be a loophole or a way to circumvent that maximum cap. And that's what we're trying to close up.
I'll add a little bit to what Chris mentioned. You know, to be clear, we want to make sure that what we're saying is, we're not trying to go back and rehash zoning districts of where family group homes are allowed or not allowed. We're certainly not getting into that. We want to go into this very targeted and just focus on that one sole issue of what is, how do we define a supervisor? So that it's very clear for this issue and for going forward, what is and what isn't. In that way, everybody knows clearly what counts and what doesn't. So that is really the sole purpose, is to give direct clarification on that supervisor issue.
Could you tie it to the count of bedrooms? So in affordable housing, you have a resident count plus a manager unit, and that one has to be closed. So the ratio is residents plus manager, and that manager has to have a specific dwelling unit, like, or a bedroom that locks situation, and you could tie that to a ratio. That might be an easier way to define it, since that might be a really fluid role or something that does change based on state regulations or... Because you can have one blanket definition versus specified for different types of homes. If you could tie it to the bedroom, that might be easier.
Chris and Samuel, let's put that on the list. We've certainly been working very closely with the city attorney's office on this, because there's some legal implications we want to make sure we're not getting out of line with. And I think that'd be something we want to kind of vet with them as far as how we come up with this methodology of that definition of what is and what isn't supervisor. But we can definitely include that in our conversations with them.
Are those not defined in the licensing regulations, who's a supervisor or not? Or is that not addressed there?
It's not defined well. It kind of, and we're, you know, basically, there are some thing... Essentially, there are two different kinds of categories, and we kind of, in the city of Winston-Salem, melded them together. You have in the state statutes, family care homes, and you have in the state statutes, group homes. And there is a distinction in between the two of them, and we essentially melded the two into one category for the purposes of our ordinance. And this was done back in 95, when the ordinance was done and was further clarified in 2000.
And to Chris's point, you know, we kind of had some conversation. I think Wilmington, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Wilmington was the one city that sort of broke those out into some more stratified definitions. And we talked about that, but then we, as a staff, kind of felt like we were starting to stray further away from what the specific ask was of planning staff, which is, what is a supervisor? So that's kind of when we started going back to where we're at now, of sort of leaving what we've got and coming back and adding clarifying language around what is a supervisor and what is not.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would ask, in those situations where there is a daytime supervisor and an overnight supervisor, do you count them both, since they are not there at the same time, since we're doing headcounts?
Well, in the context of, in the context of the family group home, the supervisor isn't counted, and that's the problem, in that, in these ones that aren't state-licensed and the ones, the one that we're particularly dealing with in this particular reasonable accommodation request, since they're not counted, they are essentially exempt. So they have, you know, whereas they're only supposed to have six folks living there, they have two what they call senior house members. So essentially, they have eight folks living in this family group home that are actually part of the program. So, you know, once we define, better define what a supervisory personnel, what that means, then, you know, they will continue to be exempt. It would just be more in line with what the original intent was, if that makes sense.
Okay. It does. Thank you.
And one other point, using the term personnel means you're not putting a cap on the number, because that's a plural. So that could be a potential loophole of unlimited number, unless you find a way to limit that number in some way.
Good point. We, if there's no more questions on this, this is one, we are not bringing this one to your October 8th meeting. We just wanted to get this out in front of the board to make you aware of this. This is one that we're gonna continue working on, a lot of the issues that we've talked about today. So this will be coming back to you at a future date, possibly November for a public hearing. But we at least did want to brief the board and make you aware of what we're working on with this item.
Okay.
All right. Moving on the agenda, item number two is our traffic impact study requirement text amendment. David Reed, David's there. He is gonna brief this one. This is an item that was a carryover from the work program. It was also mentioned in legacy as well. So David, if you're there and you're ready, go ahead and take it away.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item is proposed by Planning Development Services staff, and the request is to amend the traffic impact study standards. Next slide, please. In 2001, the standards were adopted delineating when traffic impact studies will be required for certain types of non-residential development. And to give you a little context, prior to that, large projects will be submitted for rezoning, starting to go through the process, and at the planning board meeting or even at the city council meeting, questions will be raised. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, someone was running water or something.
Okay. All right. Questions were being raised at the public hearing level, and people didn't have the answers about the traffic impacts of these developments. So it was decided that if they're gonna generate more than 150 peak-hour trips, we should probably ask for a traffic impact study on the front end, so that could be part of our review and analysis as we take the case forward and eliminate that problem of questions being raised in the public hearing process. Since 2001, many significant development projects have included a TIS as part of the rezoning process. Because UDO 73 did not apply to residential development, some residential projects that were impactful enough to justify preparation of a TIS did not require submission of such a study at the time of application. And there were some cases early on where some large developments, again, were asked to go back and do a TIS during the process, continuing the case. And it wasn't a good thing, because people would come to the meetings, take off work, participate in the process, and then the case would have to be continued for more study. Next slide, please. Furthermore, UDO 73 did not include specific language requiring a TIS for any review process other than special-use zoning. So planning or review items were not subject to this. We looked at the other large cities in North Carolina, and we learned that they all require TIS for residential development as well as non-residential. But they're all very similar to the threshold that we use of 150 peak-hour trips. Since 2001, we've also developed the sketch plan meetings, the weekly meetings where developers come in, and we give them feedback on deal-breaker issues and development regulations before they ever submit their project. And both the Winston-Salem Department of Transportation and NCDOT staff often identify the need for a TIS during these sketch plan meetings based on the trip generation of a proposed development regardless of development type. Next slide, please. Staff recommends amending the UDO to base the need for a TIS on the amount of traffic the development will add to the road network, regardless of the land use that is generating the traffic, and requiring a TIS for developments which meet the trip generation threshold, regardless of whether the proposed development is being submitted for a rezoning or a planning board review. And since I prepared this PowerPoint, I collected some additional information I'd like to share with y'all. And one thing is that if there is a large tract of land that has general-use zoning on it and doesn't require any kind of review, this text amendment would not require a TIS for that situation. You have a large piece of land, zone GB, you submit building plans, you would not be subject to this. It's only items that are going through the boards. Institutional uses are currently included, but only if they go through special-use zoning. So basically, some large institutional uses only require a planning board review. This text amendment would change whether or not they are considered to be asked to do a text amendment or to do a TIS. And I spoke with one of the consultants today about the general cost of a TIS. And it was explained to me that they generally cost about $1,500 to $3,000. The cheaper ones can use existing data and usually are just designing turn lanes. And then the larger ones are ones that have to study nearby intersections, and more work is required. So that was just a ballpark figure I got today of the general cost of that. So with that, next slide, please. We do recommend approval of this text amendment, so I try to entertain any questions you have.
Who is to say, early on, whether or not a project, or rather, what, what's the, the trip threshold is of a proposed project?
The transportation engineers, they have their IT manual. And it has, it has figures for what, you know, the square footage of non-residential or the number of units of residential.
So, so there's information that can be provided to, to the developer that states that, that provides that criteria?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And what's the threshold again? 150 trips? I think I misheard it.
150 peak hour trips.
Okay, and the, and the, my only question, I guess, is, you know, 150 trips to Tulane County Road is one thing. 150 trips to Interstate 40 is another thing. Is there a, some kind of ratio that is also a part of the equation as to whether a TIS is required or not?
Well, again, the, the meat of the language in the ordinance is we're looking for an interdepartmental meeting, which basically is our weekly sketch plan meeting. And the decision is made at that meeting whether or not a project, even if it trips this figure, is something that really needs a TIS or not. So the, the transportation professionals can, can make that determination in the interdepartmental meeting.
I, I think it's a, a good idea to, to apply a TIS requirement to all types of development, including residential. You know, if it, if there's, if planning staff then feels like it adds value to the, the presentation to the staff report. If it's, you know, so it's like if you meet a development, if you, if you meet the, the development ordinance, you can state that. Say you meet it. And if that becomes part of the staff report, this TIS meets, you know, the, the constraints that we place on development because its impact is minimal enough. But if it's not going to provide that certainty to the developer, I don't know that just adding another requirement is something I'd be crazy about unless there's. Will there be an objective way or is it purely subjective at interdepartmental review as to whether the ice is going to be required or not?
Well, at interdepartmental, if the project is big enough to trigger that threshold, then it'll be discussed by the transportation professionals as to whether or not it still needs one. If I not need one anyway, like you mentioned, depending on what the capacity or the road they're accessing is, they might say that they don't need one in that case. But it's really the only way you, we don't want to go to a meeting. We don't bring the transportation professionals to the public hearings with us every month. And we don't want to get there and try and answer questions about, is this turn lane long enough? Do they need a turn lane at all? That's, that's what's determined in the TIS, those types of things.
David, I have a question. And it has to do with the general use zoning cases. Are you saying then that a big GB development near an intersection that has a level of service D or E would not be recommended for a TIS? Or is that at the discretion of the staff? And the.
Right. The case, those items don't come to the planning board or the elected board. So they don't go through the planning office.
Well, no, I'm talking about rezoning, a rezoning to a general use.
If they rezone to general use, then, yeah, we would not be requesting this because there's no data about what would go on the ground to count how many trips it would create. So if, if we felt, or the boards felt that general use was not appropriate there, and they needed special use for this type of detail, then they could request special use zoning. But, you know, it would not apply to general use the way we've written it.
Okay.
David, do you think there's going to be any issue of availability of the DOT, those type professionals for this, for these meetings? If each one, each time you have a meeting, they will be required to attend? Is that going to be a possible delay in getting decisions?
No, both DOTs come to our weekly meetings and see all.
So they're already there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Clarence, back, back to your point. I, I think I hear what you're saying there. Are you looking for some language? Or would it make you feel better if there was some language in there that said, you know, this is the standard that kicks in the requirement for the TIS? But if the, the perspective, you know, whether it be NC DOT or WISDOT engineer looks at it and says, okay, yes, it meets the threshold. However, based on some criteria, we feel like it is not applicable here, that that person can waive that requirement? Is that kind of what you were getting at?
I think so. And I'd like further to be an objective standard, you know, a calculation, a number that is generally.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about originally or was trying to.
I, I think we can do one of the two, but I don't know that we can do both because I think, I think the uniqueness of what could possibly lead to DOT, one of the DOTs waiving that is going to be hard to quantify in terms of an objective standard. So I, I think we could put language in there that says, if the DOT staff looks at this and says, yeah, this, this just, this, this isn't needed or it doesn't provide value, they can waive it. But I don't know that we could put us, I don't know. I mean, we can try and go back at that, David, but I don't know if we can come up with a clear cut quantitative standard.
Okay, one other question. What is, give me the scope. I know 150 trips is not much. So is that, give me an example of, is that 15 house subdivision? Will that generate that many trips?
I looked at the IT manual myself today, and I tried to confirm the numbers I saw with the transportation professionals. And I, they didn't, weren't able to get back with me this afternoon. But what I found was it would probably be a 151 lot, single family subdivision.
Okay, 151 lot, single.
And probably a 340 unit mid-rise multifamily development.
Okay.
So that, that's a pretty big subdivision by today's.
Yeah, that is. Yep. How about a 50-person restaurant? What does that generate?
I do not have the numbers in front of me. I don't know.
I just wanted, you know, now, commercial use. I'm trying to, trying to figure out.
So, so certainly restaurants are some of your highest traffic generator.
Right, that's right.
Fast food with, fast food with drive-through is, I think, the highest trip generator. And it doesn't, and those are, I think, in IT manual, ITE manual, those are based on square footage. It doesn't take a whole lot of square footage for one of those to trip the threshold.
Right. So I guess my real question is, what percentage of the cases now that don't require a TIS are going to require them in the future? I guess that's really what I'm after. Is it, you know, are we designing this such so that in 80% of the cases, we're going to trigger a TIS?
Clarence, this, this is Kirk. Let me chime in on that one. I think really, and, and talking with Dave and folks about this, the effect on developers is there really shouldn't be anything that's triggering a TIS under this text amendment that isn't already triggering it. Really, the only difference is this better quantifies or qualifies in ordinance language our process so that folks know earlier on in the process, when they start those interdepartmental Friday morning meetings, that a TIS could be required unless they demonstrate the unique conditions that would say why it wouldn't be. So again, our, our interpretation in talking with Jeff Fanzler and other folks in DOT is this really shouldn't negatively impact developers. It's really should be a benefit in the sense that it's adding clarity to the process.
Right. So you, you expect it to be impact neutral, but it's going to, it'll be something that can help them plan earlier in the process.
Exactly. Impact neutral, but kind of condensing the, the amount of externalities that could happen. Like, I forget if it was Aaron or Dave who gave the example of when you go to the public hearing and then you're not able to answer questions about the required turn lanes or things of that nature to ameliorate those impacts.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make just a general point about the, the text of the proposed amendment? It looks like this was an older ordinance that was just, had a few words changed to it. And I don't know about how other people felt about this, but I kind of feel like this does not really, the language here is, there's a lot of vagueness. There's a lot of kind of wishy-washiness and equivocation in the language that doesn't fit well with the clear code that we're trying to establish. I, I just think that it would be a good idea to, to go back and look at this like, and try to make it, clean it up a little bit to make it a little crisper in the way it reads. I mean, if you just look at the first pair, couple of paragraphs, there's a lot of repetition. And it's just, it's not very well focused, in my opinion. Did anybody else feel that way after reading it?
That's a good point, Melinda. Let us go back and take a look at that because there's probably a way we can condense some of this and make it a little more concise, if that's kind of what I'm hearing from you. Still, still have the same content, but maybe perhaps a little more concise and direct.
And it's confusing. I mean, there's someone who says consideration should be given to. And, and what, what does that mean? I mean, it's, it's, that's what I mean by vague. I, I'd just like to see it read better.
That's, that's a good point. Let us, let us go back and take a look at that. We, we may, in the process of doing that, we may come back to you at your October public hearing and say, we want to continue another month to get that language correct. But let us, let us go back and take another look at that. That was a great dialogue. That was real good. Okay, Aaron. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item number three on your agenda, and that is our affordable housing bonus density text amendment. And Tiffany White is going to be making a presentation on this. So I will turn it over to Tiffany.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about UDO CC7, which is recommendations for the bonus density for affordable housing and updated parking incentives. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of background. As part of our 2020, 2021 work program, we were asked to review section 4.1.6 of the UDO regarding the bonus density for affordable housing. This provision has been in the UDO since its inception, and it's never been used. As part of your packet for this presentation, I included a 2015 report that reviewed this provision as well, although no changes were made to it at that time. And the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Housing Study and Needs Assessment also recommended reevaluation of this provision to see if it could be modified to make it more attractive as an incentive to developers who are looking at making affordable units as part of their project. Currently, the provisions in the UDO allow for a 25% density bonus for multifamily units if 40% of the units are available to residents making less than 60% AMI or 20% of the units are available to people making less than 50% AMI. And for single-family residential development, it's a 25% density bonus if 25% of the units are sold or rented to residents making less than 80% AMI. So that's what's currently at part of the provision along with some regulations and evaluation language. Next slide, please. So as I was researching, you know, and reevaluating this provision, I researched other communities, peer communities, about their bonus density provisions. And just as in the 2015 report, we're still really well in line with our peer communities on our recommendations, both our current and proposed recommendations. As part of this research, we also reached out to some local developers who've done projects that include affordable units to get some feedback on their feelings about if this was a good incentive, how effective it was in the local market, et cetera. And I'll talk about that in just a second. We also asked the community development department to review the regulatory segments of the provision. In the provision currently and in the recommendations moving forward, community development is really the department that would regulate and enforce these provisions. So we wanted to make sure that we really had them evaluate what was in there to make sure it was consistent with the language that it needed for their department as far as HUD regulations and other affordable housing programs that the city utilizes. In addition to that, we contacted the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem, who is the largest affordable housing developer in the area, to have them take a look as well, just to see, you know, their thoughts on the affordability, the density bonus provision and any of the regulatory language. Next slide, please. So here are some of the key findings based on all those conversations and all that research. While the developers we spoke to thought that bonus density in general is a good idea as far as incentivizing affordable housing, it's just not an incentive in our local market for several reasons, which include our population here just isn't high enough that make, to make bonus density or a density issue, an issue. We, our zoning districts already have density capacity that allows them to build what they want or need here. And really, land just isn't expensive enough or scarce enough here to make a density bonus as attractive as it might in other areas of the country where all these factors come into play. According to these developers, the real drivers to affordability locally to including affordable units in development were outside the scope of the UDO. And as I mentioned in my report, they specifically mentioned stormwater regulations, waivers for impact fees and development fees, and just direct cash, basically, to help with the projects. The developers also said that the land donation section of the provision, basically, which would allow the developers to donate land in order to get the density bonus, and it had to be developable land. The developers were like, that would never happen. We're keeping the land to develop ourselves. It was just basically a non-starter, that entire provision and section. Community development and HAWS really, like I said, took a good look at the regulatory language and made some revisions in order to bring it up to current standards that HUD uses and standards that community development uses for evaluating affordable programs that they already manage. And in addition, the planning staff really wanted the provision language to tie more closely to these housing programs that are offered through the city and county, again, to create some consistency among these programs. So as developers or the public look into them, there's continuity instead of planning having one set of standards, community development having another set of standards, really trying to tie all of that language together so that people coming in to utilize these provisions see that consistency among all the departments. Next slide, please. So in addition to looking at the bonus density language, when I reached out to the developers and was doing my own research, in addition to density bonuses, a lot of incentives for affordable units included parking reductions and/or variations on setbacks and side yards, et cetera. And so when I was talking to the developers, I asked if that, if reduction in parking would be an incentive locally for affordable units. And I got some mixed comments about whether or not it would really make an impact. Although across the board, they all said that, especially for multifamily, parking is one of the single highest drivers of cost. And so that reduction of parking in general really helped bring down the cost of the projects large and could impact the affordability of the project and therefore the price that they might have to sell or rent the units at. So we looked at how to best incentivize the parking reductions without overcomplicating the permitting and evaluation process. You know, would the parking be tied to the same 15-year or whatever the yearly requirement was for the affordable unit? Would they have to stay the parking affordable in, you know, as part of it in perpetuity? We were trying to really figure it out. And we finally determined that maybe the best way to, to deal with this was to look at a lot of the recommendations that we had coming out of multiple different reports that said, hey, maybe we need to think about people's housing and transportation index together and what people are paying for, not just their housing, but their transportation, how their access to local services. how their access to local services is being worked out. I referenced the Affordable Housing Sites Report that I did last year that said being close to transit is a really important thing. So staff decided that maybe the best thing that we could do for these projects was just to reduce parking requirements across the board for projects that were within a quarter mile of the legacy growth corridors or activity centers and on a transit line. This would allow for the projects to reduce their construction costs, bring down the affordability across the board for the units, and really incentivize those locations where we wanted projects like this to go anyway. So in, in figuring out whether or not we should incentivize it as part of affordable housing, we really decided that maybe this should just be an incentive for housing and, and include it both, you know, affordable and market rate. So these were the things that we looked at to bring forward. And I know that we sent you the draft text for the bonus density provision and for the updated parking provision. And with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
If I could, why did you come up with a quarter mile?
So the reason that we came up with a quarter mile was kind of twofold. It's an easy walking distance, as identified through any number of studies that have been done about walkability. It was also recommended in, again, that Affordable Housing Opportunity Sites Report that I did, that within a quarter mile of transit was a good walking distance for people. So we thought that if we're looking at these projects where we wanted to incentivize both the development and the parking, we'd stick to those standards that we had put together in previous reports and kind of the general understood standards about walkability towards transit to kind of keep them within that quarter mile of either side of growth corridors and activity centers.
Now, a few years ago, the, the bus system, the Transit Authority, changed their routes in Winston-Salem, which would have thrown a lot of places over the quarter mile and, and, and been out of that. And I'm also thinking about some of the disabled people I ran to. A quarter mile is a, a long ways in that. How do you, how do you handle the changes that we can't control through a U D O of where those trans, uh, transportation areas are? I mean, they're very, Winston-Salem, you know, just barely has a system and, and even that seems to be in flux.
Right. And so that's why we kind of made it a both and situation, that it needed to be both on a, a growth corridor or activity center and on a transit line. Our feeling was that when you look at the growth corridors and activity centers that we have identified in legacy, these are main arterial roads, Peters Creek Parkway, University Parkway, Country Club, et cetera, where honestly, yes, the bus routes will definitely change, but the fact is they're probably going to stay on those main arterials for their, the main parts of their runs, just because of the fact that they're main arterials. So yes, the transit routes could change, but by maintaining in this that they also need to be in a growth corridor or in, in activity center or within a quarter mile, I think it reduces the chances that if the transit lines change, it will suddenly throw some of these places out of compliance or whatever.
And Tiffany, just to also clarify, George, related to your question about how this addresses things beyond our control, let's say if there was a transit line and a development was built and took advantage of this provision, and then the transit line went away, that, the parking for that project would become legally non-conforming. So it would still have the, the legal protection, uh, as long as that use still continued on the property.
What is the current parking requirement for, is it a space and a half per unit? Or is it two spaces per unit, parking spaces?
It's bedroom-based and Desmond is, Desmond, if you're there, Desmond could probably answer that a little better than I could, but it's, um, it's tied to the number of bedrooms. I want to say it's about one-ish for one bedroom, two for two bedroom, and about two and a half for a three. Tiffany's nodding her head. That, that sounds about right?
Yeah.
It's based on the, the number of bedrooms, as you said, one and a half for one, 1.75 for two bedrooms, two spaces for three bedrooms, and three spaces for four bedrooms. And then it decreases for efficiency. It's just one space per unit. And then for elderly housing, it's 0.75 spaces per unit.
There's, that, that's a real savings. There's no question about that. We just put in 180 car parking lot for 1.3 million. I think that's roughly $7,200 per parking space. Now about 300 of it was stormwater. So, you know, 20% of this, somebody ain't controlling, that would have been, that stormwater cost would have been the same if it was 150 car parking space or pretty close to the same. If you want to get something affordable, that's a good place to start. He's talking, yeah, I, I don't know how planning, I know they don't get involved with utilities and, and things like that so much, but there are some, uh, there are some savings there that can take place instead of really promoting these underground carbon filtered stormwater control systems. And there's, you know, there's some science behind some of these sand-based, and Brenda can speak a lot more to this than I can, but there's some alternative means of compliance that I'd love to see us focus on. And, um, and I'll also talk about more kind of building code. There, there are some creative, a really, a really smart, sharp architect can save, you know, 10 or 12% with some good cost engineering. And while these parking spaces, that is certainly valuable. I'm not sure that cutting your parking requirement in half, it's great from a cost-saving standpoint, but I'm not sure that it will make, that it will meet market demand. You know, a three-bedroom, you know, you only lease the apartment if people have enough parking, I guess, is one way of saying that. So it is a great savings for sure, but I don't know if it'll meet a market demand.
And we were really cognizant of that as well. In addition to just market demand, there are other factors at play. I know that the low-income housing tax credit has its own parking standards. So, you know, even with, if you're, you're utilizing that, and that's for low-income housing, they have standards of parking that may or may not be in line with whatever municipality that they are working in. And in order to take advantage of that tax credit, you have to build that parking. We're certainly cognizant of that, that this isn't going to be all things to all people. But we wanted just another tool in that toolbox to help these developers reduce costs in the hope that the reduction would pass on into the, the units themselves. And again, allow for people to have an increase in housing choice, an increase in affordability across the board, and an increase in access to transit and certainly services. Because again, the, the location of these in growth quarters and activity centers also makes it close to services. So you would, you need transit, you could technically walk, hopefully walk to, to these places as well. So I agree that I don't think that this is, you know, the only thing that could move the needle. It's, it's a bunch of things that come together to try to create a, an affordable situation for, for our community. But we wanted this to be another tool.
Yeah. Well, it's definitely, I mean, that's great. And I applaud your efforts. It's definitely a savings if it meets market, you know, market demands, market needs, no question about that. 7,000 bucks per parking space, that's a big deal.
Well, now, this, go ahead.
I think this is great. I think this modernizes and brings it up to other peers. One of the comments that I have, and maybe just as a, as a side note, a quarter mile from both the growth area and transit might sometimes be difficult. And so if there could be some flexibility for these developers, if they were to provide transportation to a transit spot, like on a regular route sometimes. So when we build affordable housing developments, we'll actually buy a van and take residents to the grocery store as like a route. And that's a major cost savings for us. Just because transit is not so reliable in this region, meeting both of those might be difficult. But if they could maybe trip that, like you could have the parking reduction, but you also have to make sure, and it has to be something, a reliable program, right? It can't just be like, we have a van, and they would have to come up with a route to get to that transit spot. So that might take a little bit more, but just to open up that a little bit to capture some more, just in case.
Tiffany, that's, that's a good point Mo brings up, and we actually have an example of that. It was, I won't say Deacon Place, but that's probably not the right name of the project over off Owen Drive and Quincy and that neighborhood. That got rezoned for some student housing, probably about 10 years ago. And when that went through, I'm almost certain that Councilman Marshall at the time attached a condition that said the developer had to provide a dedicated van service that allowed, that, that brought kids back and forth from campus to that site. So we may have some language in there that we can research and not reinvent the wheel on, but that, that's certainly something worth chasing down.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a, that's a good idea. I, I think that my only concern, we can definitely look at this other provision, is we've all seen how quickly apartment buildings are being sold around here. And so how we create the language so that, you know, if you build it and you have it, and then a year later you sell it, you know, we want to be able to keep that, um, that provision in place potentially so that we don't lose that.
So with the affordable units, I'm assuming that there would be a Laura attached to those affordable units with the density. You attach the driving, the van provision to the Laura. So you legally cannot have it not attached to something for affordable housing, so that's the avenue you would take.
Mo, just to clarify that point, uh, this parking reduction provision wouldn't just be for affordable housing. This would be for market rate properties as well.
Then, then this might be a, um, a non-starter. But I, I think it's great. It was just an idea for just the affordable component to get a little bit further out on that transit.
Let us, let us do a little more research on that because anything we can do to encourage carpooling and, 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 you know, less of those parking burdens, whether it's market or affordable, to me is a good thing. So let us, let us do a little more research on that idea.
And, and the only thing I would like to add is, is a soft point, I guess. When, when you mentioned University Parkway, Peters Creek Parkway, those kinds of thoroughfares, I can't imagine many places in Winston-Salem that would be less desirable to walk a quarter mile on.
Fair point. Yeah. Ho- hopefully we'll be able to work on that as well as part of some of our transportation plans, but it's true.
That I would definitely applaud. Thank you.
Tiffany, I had a question about the section E, where you have the communication that's supposed to occur. How, what's the provision for the communication between the different agencies to make sure that that is accomplished? How is that going to work?
So.
The counseling and those things.
Right. So you're talking about the counseling with the home buyers. That's the program that's already in place in community development. So with their existing affordable housing programs and community development, they have counseling sessions with the potential buyers about what that looks like. And so this would just flow into that same system that, that they already have in place to help those people who qualify for those affordable programs.
Any other comments? All right, Aaron, there's no board action on this, so.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll be bringing that back to your October 8th public hearing, and we'll continue to work on those ideas that were discussed here. So.
All right.
And I guess that brings us, Mr. Chairman, to the debriefing of your last two public hearings.
Yeah. So anyone have anything, any comments or thoughts from our last two, 13th, August 13th and September 10th?
Well, I did want to say something about, again, this brings up traffic. We had a case, not at our last meeting, but the one before, that involved a traffic concern, which was the Arbor Acres case. And then at our last meeting, we had what I thought was a traffic issue, which was how the traffic was rooted from the multifamily section of the new phase of Long Creek Village through it, through local neighborhood streets. And they, there was a, the contrast that I saw is that in the Arbor Acres case, I understand that the, the neighbors haven't had a real concern about traffic through their, through their neighborhood. But it, this was actually Arbor Road is a collector road. Whereas in the road that we looked at last, this month, there were two neighborhood streets that were potentially going to be access points to the new development. Forgotten their names. One was Martha, which was the one that was affected by the, what we looked at, the final development plan that we looked at this month. But then in a future phase, there's another neighborhood street that would also be affected. And I just wanted to, to say that I thought that there is a difference between these two cases and that the impact to neighborhood streets, I thought, was much more significant. But the reason that I voted for the development plan was because it had already been, basically the zoning was already in place. So there really weren't any other options. If this was a new rezoning case, I would have been opposed to this situation because it was, I thought, too disruptive to the neighborhood streets. And I just wanted to see if the staff felt that way, or did they think that, that this was an acceptable situation?
But Melinda, a couple of points on that. One, I'll, I'll start with Arbor Acres first. Arbor Acres went to city council. There was a lot of discussion there. And ultimately Arbor Acres was continued for one month to allow for further study of the traffic issues going on with Arbor Acres. So that is currently underway, and that will come back to city council on October the 5th. And, and whatever additional traffic data or ideas or solutions can be offered to council on, on October the 5th. I, I, I think with respect to the Long Creek Village site, you know, there was a limited ability of what staff could do with respect to it being a final development plan. And, and frankly, you know, that was a lot of the discussion that David and Kirk and Desmond and I have had internally with the rest of our staff. That, that's really another one of the points of why the, the item number two, the T I S amendment, is an important one. Because, you, you know, you, you kind of hit on it, you know, we talked about this on Arbor Acres. We talked about it on Long Creek Village. We, we have talked about this on, you know, we talked about it. Even though there was a T I S, we talked about it heavily when True Lion was looking to expand last year. Traffic continues to be more and more of a theme as, as we continue to develop, and it continues to pop up more and more. So I think item number two, the T I S requirements, getting those adjusted to hopefully have some, um, some additional measures in place to deal with these will be a help going forward. But to, to me, that was a little bit, I think you nailed it. The distinction was really the rezoning versus the, the final development plan piece of that.
Yeah, I just, after going to see that, those roads, I just had a real concern about safety bringing in a lot of traffic through, through those streets. And so it was, I had a lot of heartburn over that case.
Thank you, Melinda. Any, to anyone else? All right. If not, we're going to.
Chris, if no one else brings it up, we did talk about the issue with the storage units that was not last, this month, but the month before and over on Country Club.
Yeah, the Gordon Manor.
Yeah. And, and I think part of that discussion was that we were going to talk more about what are the suitable locations for those, that type of development? And is there a U D O change that we might consider?
I, I'll, I'll hit that one here under staff report if you're, if that'll work.
Okay.
All right. All right. Well, Aaron, seeing no one else, I think we'll move right into the staff report, and you can address Ms. Douglas' question as well.
So I'll start with that one first, as it was just brought up. Looking ahead to your October work session, we are going to be bringing you a draft work program for the final six months of, of the fiscal year. And that is an item that we are, are going to include in that work program. So you, it, it will not be right away. You will probably see it in the balance of the year. But yes, that is one that I think is staff. We, we need to go back and give some study to that because clearly the, the self-storage model has changed greatly from 1995 when those standards were put in the U D O. So that will be included in your work program that comes back in, in October. So I just wanted to mention that. I'll run through, I've just got several items. I'll hit these very briefly for you. 2020 census, this is the last time you're going to hear me bug you for 10 years, but if you haven't already done so, please complete the census. And if you haven't done so, please reach out to your family, your friends, your coworkers, your neighbors, folks you go to church with, whoever you hang out with, and just put in a plug. If anybody has not, please complete the census. We, Forsyth County is currently at a self-response rate of around 65%. So we're, we're off our pace from 2010. The, the city staff has been putting on the full court press. If you follow the city's social media accounts, you have probably seen multiple posts per day. You probably read in the Journal this morning, there was an article, Fox 8 ran an article, yes, a news piece yesterday, and council held a press conference yesterday to really drive home the point. But the census ends on September 30th, so we have six days left and it is super, super critical. We, we've talked about this with you before, but it's super critical to get as high of a response rate as we can for Forsyth County. So that, that's the last time you'll hear me mention that for 10 years. So another quick item I just wanted to mention, some of you may have read the article in the Winston-Salem Journal that Forsyth County was awarded, I think it was about a $660,000 grant to purchase the, the 200-ish acres up at Blues Lake for the development of a future county park. This is something they have been working on for, for a number of years and trying to think about that site as a park. So one of the interesting things that came out of that is many of you know Marco Andrade on our staff. Marco's got a wealth of design experience and you guys see that frequently in the work that you review. Marco partners and collaborates with the county park staff and the county in general on a lot of things. And so the recreation and park staff reached out to Marco for some possible site planning, design assistance for this 200 acres at Blues Lake. And Marco, Marco did what Marco always does, is produce a very high quality product. And that was actually attached and included with the grant application. And one of the things that the folks reviewing the grant application specifically called out was they had never seen a site plan that detailed and well-done attached to a grant request before. And that was one of the main things that helped solidify Forsyth County as, as far as getting that grant funding. So we are very proud of Marco and his work that he has done to really help make that project a reality for Forsyth County. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to publicly thank Marco and really congratulate him on his work that, that was very well done. I'll mention our Doral Drive, Rinaldo Road interchange plan. We started, we had our initial outreach meeting before COVID and COVID kind of hit the brakes on that as we've struggled to really find an effective way to do public outreach during this. So we are going to pick that back up. We're going to host our second meeting and that'll be next Tuesday. And it's going to be virtual. It's going to be through Zoom. And there are two time slots we have set aside on Tuesday, one at 10:30 in the morning and one of the more traditional times at 5:30 in the afternoon. And we tried to put two there, knowing that folks have sort of varying work schedules now with COVID. So we wanted to give two opportunities for folks to hit either one that may work better for their schedule. So we have sent notification back out to folks who have participated and the information is published on our website. So we will begin those efforts back next Tuesday with that, that planning effort. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned something to me this morning. You asked a question of how our UDO clear code, we did a lot of discussion and a lot of talk about that very long process to get the UDO more user-friendly. Your question to me was how was it going? And my comment to you was, it's, it's generally good. The comments we have received have been very positive. Since our conversation this morning, I just wanted to share with you really another really huge benefit of this is our old UDO, we were contracting with Munich Code. And so every time we did a text amendment, we wouldn't just send that to Munich Code because of the way their pricing was. We would, we would hold those together. We would batch them and we would send either one or two batches to them each year. So, you know, if you just did a text amendment today, it may be six months before that was reflected in the, on Munich Code's version online. We now have cut ties and we do not pay anybody to publish the UDO. We publish that in-house. We, we publish, maintain and edit it in-house. And so you may remember UDO CC1, that was the first text amendment under the clear code format. That was our PRD text amendment. You guys recommended approval, city council approved it, and then the county commissioners were the last body to approve that. That was approved, I think, last Thursday. Kirk was able to go in and, and basically modify the text and now the UDO that you see online is current. So that is a great saving is really to anybody who's using that document to know that it is, it is going to be pretty current just about anytime you touch it. And we're not going to have these long periods of lag time where various UDO amendments are missing or not included in there. So kudos to Kirk for, for doing that, for, for working that out to get that update and staying on top of it. That's our plan moving forward to make sure that, if yes, to make sure that we're staying on top of it, because that's a real benefit, not just for staff, but for anybody who's using the document. So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add a little bit to what I mentioned to you earlier and make the board aware of that as well.
Thank you so much.
And the very last thing I'm going to mention is I see Larry Bell is still included in our meeting. I just wanted to say a big sincere thank you to, to Larry and to the marketing staff. One of the things that the planning board does not see is, is certainly see the two meetings we do each month that are streamed live. Well, there, there's 40 some odd city boards and commissions and just about all of those are meeting virtually and all of those meetings have to be streamed live. So Larry and the, and the staff and TV 13 and marketing have really just done an outstanding job of really working with all these departments, you know, to make, make this seamless and to get these meetings live streamed so the public can participate, can view and watch them. So really just a big hats off to Larry and the team there for helping us out and all of our other, the six boards that we staff and all the other countless boards that are under the city umbrella. So just wanted to take an opportunity to really publicly thank those guys for all their work. And, and that's all I've got.
All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Mo, welcome again. Enjoyed your comments tonight. Miss Finn?
I will have our motion to adjourn from San Francisco.
Enjoy. Bye-bye. Thank you.